Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabara House of Delmar, together with my co-host Mark Warner, just stay away news service, jbs tech family dot com. And as you can see here, calmness for the Jewish press.
Right Rabbi, I'm having fun with all three assignments. And the column in the Jewish press is called Albany Beat. And I talk about how government relates to the Jewish community, or doesn't, as the case may be. But someone who I believe relates well to the Jewish community is our guest today, Richard Conti. The Albany Common Council Pro Tem. And means you run the show in the Albany Common Council.
The President Pro Tem.
President Pro Tem, right. So you run the show in the Common Council. You set the agenda.
Set the agenda, assign, appoint committees, assign legislation, try to make sure that the meetings run smoothly and along.
Is that an elective position?
The President Pro Tem is elected by the other 15 members of the council. So I'm elected from an individual ward, the sixth ward, which is downtown Center Square Hudson Park, Lock Street area. And then at the beginning of our organizational meeting, when the council meets to elect their officers, they elect a President Pro Tem and they elect a Majority Leader.
And Dan Herring we had on the show is the Majority Leader. Do you have any opposition, because you've been in this position as President Pro Tem since when?
Been President Pro Tem since 2004, I think, you know.
Over a decade.
Yeah, it was a midterm adjustment. And I've, you know, been elected by my colleagues every four years since then.
And has it, have you ever had opposition? Has anyone ever expressed interest in this?
No, I think, I guess people have been satisfied somewhat, although not everybody agrees with me, but I.
Well, not only satisfied, but maybe this is a big lift and no one else wants to have, I mean, you don't get extra pay for this.
There is, there is a little bit of a stipend for the leadership. But it, there is extra responsibility.
Yes.
You know, in terms of additional meetings, coordinating committee assignments, things of that nature.
Takes away from your personal, takes away from your personal time.
Tell me about it. But it also, you know, it's important when you're personal time, and I hope I do, that I try to treat all of my colleagues and members with respect.
Yes.
And be even-handed and make sure that everyone has an opportunity to, you know, do what they need to do as far as representing their constituents and doing the job that they need to do.
Personally, I've only heard good things. So that's why I asked if you've ever had opposition, because it would surprise me if you said yes. You know, but I've only heard good things about your leadership side.
There are some people that say, you know.
What are the big issues in Albany that you've?
Oh, right now, the big issues, and we're going to have to deal with that coming up soon, the months of October and November are really, you know, time-consuming because we're dealing with financial issues and the city's financial situation, which like a lot of urban areas, we have a lot of demands for services, we have limitations on how we can raise revenue in terms of our tax base and other areas. So when it all comes back to, you know, it always comes back to money. And so it's really being able to have the funds you really need to provide the services that people expect from city government, you know, police, fire, sanitation, the basic, basic public services like that. So that, that really is the biggest issue that we have right now.
Do you ever say so as a Common Council President? Because you have the mayor and you have the individuals. I mean, would you say you're more like an organizer, or it is my opinion, just the way I'm?
Because the President Pro Tem is a position, and there is a Council President.
Oh, really?
And the Council President, who's elected citywide, is the presiding officer. So with the role of the Council President presides at meetings and has some other functions. So there, there is a president.
And that's Carolyn Blockland, who's been on the program all season.
Carolyn and I were both elected at the same time.
So she runs citywide?
So the President, right, the President runs citywide. They are the presiding officer, preside at meetings. The President has the, does not vote.
Unless there's a tie.
Unless there's a tie. And the President succeeds to the office of Mayor in the event that there's a vacancy. It's sort of like Vice President or Lieutenant Governor.
Right, and that happened.
When Rastus Corning passed away, you know, that's how Tom Whalen became Mayor, he succeeded that way.
Right. Did you know, were you around at that?
I was, yeah, I was just coming in, I'm not originally from Albany.
You're from Staten Island.
From, I grew up on Staten Island.
Sorry to hear that. I'm from Brooklyn. Staten Island should be part of Jersey, according to Brooklynites, so, but anyway.
Well, a lot of Brooklynites moved down to Staten Island and changed the whole idea.
What's a good Democrat like you doing in a Republican borough like Staten Island?
Actually, you know, the, oh, the registration on Staten Island is actually more Democratic than Republican. And it is more Democratic now than it was. And I grew up, you know, my father was active in Richmond County Democratic Committee. So that's how I kind of also, I was always interested in politics. I kind of got involved that way. He was a committee person down there.
So did you know Betty Connolly at the time?
I knew who she was and kind of knew her, yeah. And then, of course, she served in the Assembly for a number of years where I work now. And she was a member of the Health Committee, which is where I work.
Our Chief of Staff.
So I, correct, so I, I knew her, I knew her back then. And her husband was an alumni of the high school I went to, which was St. Peters High School.
Isn't it amazing how small world?
Yeah, no, it all comes together. And St. Peters is also a Christian Brothers School, so it's not like a CBA up here, but that was my background.
So, you know, we call it Jewish geography when it's in the Jewish community, but maybe Catholic geography or something.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, you run into a lot of people from Staten Island.
But I remember, you know, back then, you know, Striniere and Connolly and John Markey, of course, in the Senate.
Correct. All people that I remember in, you know, growing up that I, well, growing up on Staten Island, you grew up with John Markey when I was growing up.
He was old then, when you were, when you were young?
He was there for a long time, but.
Well, he served 50 years, over 50 years in the State Senate.
Yeah, correct, correct, so, but, you know, in terms of, going back to a little bit to some of the issues that we're dealing with. I think that's what the nature of the show seems to be. So budget is very important to us right now, but also we're dealing with this whole rezoning initiative called Rezone Albany. So that's something that's going to be discussed a lot during October, November, December as well.
Let's stay on the budget. The budget is 10% out of whack in the sense that it's approximately a $180 million budget and 18 million deficit. Approximately, around how?
Approximately, I think it's probably maybe 20, but you know, there is.
20 million dollars?
It's in the area 18 to 20 million. And we'll have a better idea once it's released. It's a structural deficit, which means that we have this, this structural gap that we've had for, it's not new. We've had the gap for a long time, going back to the previous administration as well. And it's, the difference is our expenditures and our revenues don't match up. And we're not really able to increase the revenues that we need sufficiently without really creating a problem.
So when I, so when I said, when I sat through several of the Rezone Albany presentations, it seems as though by rezoning the city, you can possibly get more income by resizing what types of properties could be built to certain places.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that the, well, the intention of rezone is not to generate more income. It is to make the zoning system and neighborhood development and economic development easier and more friendly. So it's also easier for businesses that want to come in and relocate to know, you know, what the rules are.
Which brings more money to the corridors of the city. I mean, there's nothing wrong in saying that.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the ways that we have to deal with our financial problem also is to grow our, our base, our economic base. And getting more businesses and increasing the value, the value of our property. That grows the base so that the tax burden is spread out more, and then you can hopefully increase the revenue that way.
Sure, and get rid of some of those zombie homes and, or whatever. But are there line items in the budget that could be eliminated? I know that the state did this in order to bring the gap closer, you know, close the gap a little. Is that if you take out line items of line, of jobs that are not filled but have a price tag on that line, that you can?
You know, you, there, you always have a certain number of vacant positions. And right now, there is kind of a hire and freeze on, except for those positions that need to be filled. You know, you have positions that are funded by grants, for example, that you need to fill them, or that are, we have grants that are dependent on positions being filled, so that you do that. You, you, you can look at the issue of vacancies and vacant positions and make an assessment as to whether or not you need to continue or not. It's not a, the structural deficit we have is not one which you can just, you know, fill that way. I sometimes call nickel and diming it.
It's one mechanism, I think. And I was just going to ask you, does the mayor?
But remember, a lot of our, you know, our expense, it tends to be personnel and benefits. Tends to be, you know, obligated benefits in terms of pension, which we don't determine our pension contribution, because we're part of the state retirement system. So the state controller sets what we have to pay. Police and Fire, for example, are, you know, big areas. We have grants that fund part of the staffing for Police and Fire right now. So if we wanted to reduce Police and Fire, we would have to get rid of grant-funded positions first. That doesn't create any savings for us, because those grants come with a maintenance of effort requirement.
And these are federal, I remember being at one of the firehouses where it was like, you know, Senator Schumer was supposed to show up, didn't?
Yes, there was a safe, we have a safer grant for the firefighters that were able, enabled us to bring 15 new firefighters on. And we have a, I'm not sure what it's called, it's still called the COPS or More COPS Grant for the Police Department. So it, you know, those are areas where you really can't reduce staffing there without really cutting very deeply to the point where it's difficult.
It's unsafe, yeah, it makes the city unsafe.
But, you know, we look at, and I think this administration has been good in terms of looking at efficiencies in how we operate, looking at, you know, how we measure time and attendance, so we've gone to electronic time and attendance, looking at improving our, you know, our IT systems, things of that nature, so that we can, we can operate. You know, let's wonder, you need to operate more efficiently, and that generates savings. But they come over time sometimes, and it's not like a magic bullet, like you turn something on, it's right there.
So maybe you can explain something to, you know, I've been around the Capitol for about 30-plus years, 35-plus years. And I'm always used.
Longer than I have.
And I'm used to the, the situation where the leaders of the House come down and meet with the Governor and hammer out, you know, certain requests, obviously talking about hundreds of billions of dollars of a budget, as opposed to hundreds, 180 million. But do you meet with the Mayor before she presents her budget and go over the budget? Because it doesn't seem as though you dispose of much of her budget, because you don't have a budget staff.
Well, we don't have, you know, part of, and even on the state level, when you're, when you have the discussions regarding the budget, when it ends up with, even though it sounds like a big amount, you're talking about a small percentage.
Yeah, I know, 2%, 3%.
So, yeah, so a billion on this, you can talk about a billion dollars on the state side, and it's a small percentage in comparison to the 50 or the 80 or whatever billions they talk about there. And the same thing on the, on the city side, you know, we end up arguing about or discussing about, you know, 2% or 3% because that's what you have the flexibility to deal with. We can't touch, you know, we can't touch benefits, we can't touch contractual obligations, we can't touch debt service, we can't eliminate, touch salaries or eliminate positions or, you know, things like that. So we have to work, in a sense, with, we have a limited purview that we work within. But you also need to work with the executive, with the Mayor, I think, in terms of working together cooperatively to try to come to mutual agreement on issues like that.
So you don't meet with her ahead of time?
We, I do not know the details of the budget.
And then you see it for the first time when she presents it?
Yes.
Okay.
But what you try to do, and with the Finance Committee, what they do, and they should do, and what I think, you know, our current Chair, Council Member Duchesne is doing, does, is the Finance Committee will be having, you know, establish more of a relationship with budget staff so that we have ongoing discussions during the course of the year in terms of some of the challenges and things. And have, so there are certain expectations that we have as far as what might be included.
Frank Camiso now works for the County Controller, he worked for the State Controller, he's a numbers geek. And he doesn't mind me saying that. But shouldn't, wouldn't it be prudent for the Common Council to have their own budget master?
We do have a position that we haven't filled, that we haven't been, no. There is a line in our budget for a policy analyst that might be a kind of, could have a financial background or a policy background. But we did put out a posting on it. I think we, you know, we needed to step back based on the responses to try to figure out what we actually wanted. And then with all of the issues that are going on right now and trying to, you know, with the financial problems, we haven't, up until now, been able to fill that position. But there is a, there is a position there.
Don't you feel helpless, like, you know, you wish you would have known, you wish you would know more about the intricacies? Or, you know, do you have people at your disposal?
The Council, from my time, when I first started on the Council, we have grown in terms of staff. And so there's been a kind of progression. And that position was the next step where we want to try to get that position filled. But it's been a little bit of a challenge.
Okay, now, I would be remiss if I didn't ask you about your trash tax that you proposed.
I don't have a trash tax.
No?
You mean the fee?
The fee, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I mispronounced.
It's actually not my proposal.
It's not, you were tagged with it, though, I thought. No, the trash, the?
Well, you know, the, the.
That everyone in the city would have to pay?
Waste collection fee was proposed as part of last year's budget, and so.
But only for multiple?
For multiple four units. It applies to two through four.
Didn't you want to expand that to every single house?
So I think it's an equitable, it's a question of equity if we're going to have that. And the way other cities do, and it's very common in other communities, other municipalities, who have seen that they have to really find a way to fund trash collection, because they can't fund it through their general revenues. And our property taxes, we don't collect enough in property taxes to cover all the services that people think we provide. You know, property taxes don't even cover the Police Department. So that's why we have other sources of revenue that we need to try to keep things going. So what, it's a couple of-pronged approach. So right now, so that the, the collection fee was put in place to help offset the cost of curbside collection. Something we've been able to do in part because we've had this landfill that has generated revenue for us and also allowed us to dispose of trash for free. That's going away, the revenues are going down, we need to find alternatives. So in the interim, what was put in place was a, a collection fee to offset the cost of curbside collection. That sunsets in 2019, the authorization for that sunsets in 2019. And then, parallel to that, we reinvigorated a, a planning process that began, but was a little dormant for a while, to look at longer-term solutions to how we dispose of curbside trash. And one of the things we're doing, we're moving in directions like we're, this year, we've begun to pilot automation of recycling. We're going to expand that next year. In 2018, we're going to pilot what we call is a pay-as-you-throw system, where people pay based on the amount of trash they throw, which is very common in other communities. You know, either you get special bags or tags or carts. And then in 2019, that might be fully implemented. And the idea of the fee, the current fee, is to go away when the new longer-term process for trash disposal comes in place. So right now, it only applies, you know, in theory, one unit or one family dwellings are exempt, the way it's structured right now. And then two through four, which are the ones that get curbside collection, they pay a fee. It's, in terms of equity, and, you know, in terms of the, where I, my district and I represent also, it makes sense that if we're going to have a fee, everybody needs to share in the responsibility. So I'm not proposing to take the current fee and simply expand that. But to do it a little bit differently so that it's structured.
This is why I ask you, because I.
No, so it's not, you know.
Because I, if I got it wrong, I'm sure a lot of other people did.
No, the current fee is $180, which is supposed to, is subject to annual reviews or actually reflects costs. My proposal is not to charge everybody $180.
Okay.
My proposal is not to expand the amount of revenue that we collect.
Tell us what it is.
The revenue is 1.5 million is what that is supposed to collect. My proposal is to stay within that revenue number, no more, no less. But to create a, a fee structure that you create a base fee for the first unit, and then a graduated scale that goes up for the second, third, and fourth. So that will be more equitable. Everybody has a responsibility to contribute toward it. And one of the discussions we're having right now is what are the actual costs? So I want to identify again what the costs are, and to make sure that we're only throwing the actual direct costs into the basket that is, that fee is based on. And we also propose that, once we calculate the direct cost, the fee should reflect no more than 50% of the direct cost. So it's not, it's not jacking it up too much, but it's keeping it at a reasonable amount, a temporary fee that gets us through this, this hole in effect, to where we want to be.
So who figures out these numbers if you don't have a?
Oh, it's part of, it's under the current law, the Mayor is supposed to submit the, the schedule. So we would work in that direction.
So you, but this is something you?
We work with, we work with the finance people in the administration as well in terms of the numbers.
But this is something you proposed.
That's my proposal in terms of if we're going to continue the fee, this, we need to structure it in a different way.
Yeah, okay, so I just want to make sure that was still you who's proposing.
The Mayor is not, I, you know, I don't, we don't have the Mayor's budget yet, but I have no, I don't, I believe that they're going to propose continuation of the existing one, which, again, I want. It's just a question of equity in that it should be really spread out.
So then when it comes to the Common Council, you put an amendment? You put an amendment out that says?
Well, I already have an amendment pending to the existing law. So that's a discussion that we'll have as part of the budget process. And of course, I would need a majority of the Council members to support that in order to do it.
Well, my calculations is you have at least 10 that are always on your side.
No.
No? Okay.
I don't know what that, where that 10 comes from.
Well, just my observation of how the votes.
I've seen some close votes, I've seen some votes that might go 13 or to two or whatever, or something like that.
Right, right, but I've always seen at least 10 that have been with you, you know, been with you. I don't know, I'm just saying, okay, that's what I've noticed. I haven't been to every meeting, but that's what I've noticed. Now, you also are in favor of the $15 minimum wage.
Yeah, and, you know, that's, those are one of the issues in terms of things that we're dealing with. You know, the state increase in the minimum wage is going to have an impact on us as well.
And by the time it gets to $15, according to the state, it's going to be worth 13 today's dollars.
Yeah, well, again, there's a, there's a difference in terms of the upstate, downstate dynamic as far as what the state law was, but, you know, yes. So when we say $15, it wasn't, you know, you know, effective January 1, all of a sudden it goes up to $15, it has to be phased in.
But you're in favor of this?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Now, I think it's best if it's done on the, on the national level. But I think it's important also, if we can't, that states sometime lead the way in terms of trying to move forward. Uh, localities can, you know.
But it should be statewide at least.
It should be, you know, statewide. There, I understand the issue of like a regional adjustment, because, you know, there's differences in cost of living upstate, downstate.
Right.
And that's something that can be factored in, but you need to, you need to assess impacts.
Well, and I want to ask you, this is kind of tongue-in-cheek. Why is there no Minority Leader in the Common Council? You have a Majority Leader.
The rules, you know, they all, and I've always said, maybe the Majority Leader title should be something different. But when I got there, that was, that was the position that was there. And even though, you know, we are all Democrats in terms of what we're, we don't always agree on everything, so, you know, and you have different factions. The role of Majority Leader is really to, you know, assists the President Pro Tem in terms of the President Pro Tem's carrying out their functions. So for example, when the President is absent, then the President Pro Tem becomes the presiding officer. And the Majority Leader would take over the role of the President Pro Tem on the floor. Or if I'm not at a meeting, if I'm unable to be at, you know, because I have my other job, and there are other things that come up. If I'm not at a meeting, then the Majority Leader serves as the function of President Pro Tem when I'm not there. So it probably could be, have a better title than it is.
Aside from that, I thought you were going to say, because we only have Democrats in the Common Council. And there is no minority, you say, except someone who's of another skin color is a minority.
And that's not the nature, yes.
And I'm saying that, I'm not saying you should, I don't want to get you in trouble.
But our rules actually establish the position of Majority Leader and do not establish the position of Minority Leader.
It doesn't?
No, the rules actually establish that position.
Because there hasn't been a Republican elected in the city since 1906 or '08, in the Barnes administration.
Yeah, probably, I mean, there has been, you know, there, I think Cory Ellis was the last Council Member who was elected in November on a non-democratic line, because he was, he had, he was, he lost a primary, and then he continued on to November as the Working Families Party candidate. And he was elected in November against the incumbent running on Working Families line.
Oh.
So it can happen depending on the circumstances, but.
But like I prefaced, this is all tongue-in-cheek, I just understood.
Yeah, it's all tongue-in-cheek, and the same thing like our, our caucuses that we have on Wednesday, they're not, they're not party caucuses. They're more like, you know, work sessions or whatever, so we don't exclude anybody.
Also, the Barn, you extend your, beyond your Common Council district, you're on the Board of the Barn, or?
No.
Do you have some connection with the Barn?
Not beyond supporting it, you know.
That's it, okay.
There's a lot of organizations in the community that I support.
Okay, because I thought that was something special for you.
The Albany Barn down on?
Auburn Hill.
Yeah, no, 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 beyond.
I thought that was something special for you, that's why I was bringing it up, not anything in particular.
I do, I do support them.
Okay, okay. There's, oh, okay. Do you find that there's more of a turnover in the Common Council? I know there's more of a turnover in the state legislature now than we've ever seen. I mean, in 10 years, you can go into the, the top third of seniority in the state assembly. It's really amazing. How about in the Common Council, do you find that there's?
You have different years. When I, when I was first elected, we had three new members, you know, Carolyn, Joe Igoe, and myself were elected that year.
And that was?
That was 1998. There, and then I remember there was a year when we had five members, that was a third. But the last election was when we had our biggest turnover. The combination of, you know, people who retired and people who may have lost primary elections. But we had, yeah, redistricting may have had an impact with one or two races. But there were seven new members, and in my time in the Council, in my memory, that's the highest turnover we ever had.
That's almost half the Council.
It's almost half. And it, it used to be, you know, when I first got involved in politics in Albany, it was not very competitive, except in my, in the sixth ward, where we were the, you know, the nasty insurgents that always challenged the machine.
Right.
And after that.
That's the spirit?
Yeah, that was it. And then after that is that, you know, now it's more common. So that every member of the Council, right now, except one, got there through, you know, a competitive race, you know, a primary election, which, you know, changes, which, you know.
Were you the one?
No, yeah, same.
You were primary?
Actually, my first, my first primary, I ran in open election, that was Sharon Ward's seat at the time.
Sharon Ward, yeah.
Sharon was left and relocated, Nancy Burton.
Nancy Burton.
Right, and so when I ran, I ran in a three-way primary. It was very active and very contested.
But since then?
Then I did have a primary in my second election, and since then I have not.
Then, then, since then, no, how dare they run against you?
No, well, that was, you know, that was, especially if you have an open seat and things like that, that happens. And as I said, everyone on the Council, except for one member.
Are you friends with those people who ran against you, or did they move away?
Yeah, no, well, I, Sharon is no longer in the area, Nancy Burton, I'm, you know, Nancy, I'm fine.
The people who primaried you, are they still in the district? Are you friendly with them? Because I always hear these stories, oh, yeah, he ran against me, now we're best friends, you know?
Uh, yeah, I mean, they're not, they don't all live in the district right now. But the people that I ran against, you know, some people ran and then moved on. It used to be back then also, some, it used to be Republican candidates, these young kids out of the legislature who all wanted to, you know, cut their teeth on something, and they'd run a race and.
I know one of those guys in the county legislature, you know who I'm talking about. Okay, so I just got to ask you one other thing. You were involved in your other job in the state about, with the Burger Commission report, that was something that was really?
Yeah, I mean, that came out.
And it said that the Commission's report did not rectify the violation of the Open Meetings Law and the conduct. meetings law and the conduct of its work.
Hmm, I'm not sure what was that.
And that was something that was stated. And I was just, and you're not sure about that? Okay, so let me see what I can.
We're just about out of time now.
Yeah, I know, but I wrote that somewhere.
Yeah, at that point, when the Berger Commission was done, we were.
Unfortunately, and it doesn't say, let's see, statement, oh, this was a statement on the Berger Commission recommendations. I guess it was put out by your boss, by Assemblyman Gottfried, but you were the contact on that.
Yeah, okay, well, we weren't involved with the Berger Commission during their deliberations or meetings because he was not a member.
But there was some issue about not having open meetings?
There may have been some questions about their meetings that were not public.
Right.
But the legislature really didn't get involved with the Berger Commission until they issued their report.
Oh.
And then we had the option of voting it down, but we also, the health committee, remember because we held a series of public hearings on the commission report. Actually, there were simultaneous hearings.
Now that we have several years under our belt with this, hospitals doing better? Are we doing better in healthcare because of it, just generally speaking?
I don't know if it would be, if, as a result of the Berger Commission, I mean, the Berger Commission was intended, whether or not we agree or not, was intended to identify excess capacity and inefficiencies within the system.